Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Dr. Alejandra Barraza, President of the High Scope Educational Research Foundation. It is my pleasure to welcome you today to our In Equity in Early Childhood Education, Part of Segregation by Experience: Agency, Racism, and Learning in the Early Grades Book Study. We are very excited to hold this book study, our second one in High Scope. And at this time, I would like to invite all our participants to please answer the survey. We want to learn a little bit about who is joining us today. You will see the survey on the chat. If you could please click on it and then let us know who's here. For those who are asking, you can see the survey on the chat. Thank you very much, everyone, for answering this. I see that we have administrators, program directors, curriculum coordinators, teachers, early childhood educators, and coaches and mentors for early childhood. Thank you very much for sharing that. At this time, I do want to share our moderator for today, Dr. Fabian Doucet. Unfortunately, was not feeling well, so I will take over in her role as moderator. And we look forward to having her in one of our other session roundtables. The purpose really of our book study and the importance of why High Scope wants to participate in this is really goes back to the history of High Scope. Our founder in 1962 realized that there was clear segregation going on in Ypsilanti, Michigan during the time that he was in the special education director of a school district. So he set out, along with Charles Beatty, to talk about and think about what could be done differently in our school system. So for High Scope, it is very important that we continue to have these conversations and that we bring it to the table to educators in the 2021 years. It is my pleasure to introduce and to welcome our authors of the book, Segregation by Experience. And we have Dr. Jennifer Kizader, who is the Associate Professor of Curriculum and Instruction at the University of Texas at Austin, Hook &amp; Horns, and also the Director of the Agency and Young Children Research Collective. We also have Dr. Kyomi Sanchez Suzuki Colgrove, who is the Associate Professor of Bilingual and Early Childhood Education at Texas State University. Welcome, authors. Dr. Darren, Dr. Colgrove, I wanted to start by asking you, why the title? Why the title of the book?
I know, it's like a really serious title, right? Um, so I can give my answer, Kyomi, if you want to give yours. I would say the title really came from thinking about the this conversation we've been having in early childhood education globally about access and how for a very long time, early childhood education was only for privileged children, whatever that meant in whatever country we're talking about. And over time, access was the main conversation that we were having and wanting all students to have access to early childhood education. And as that access has grown, obviously, it's not where we want it to be. But as that access has grown globally, now the conversation, I think importantly, is shifting to what kind of actual learning experience are children having at school? So we may have them be in our programs. Access may be achieved, but what is the actual learning experience that children are having? And what we found by being in dozens and dozens of schools in multiple countries, although this book is talking specifically about the US, but our work on agency, we've been to many countries at this point doing this research. And what we keep finding is some children have access to active and sophisticated and dynamic kind of learning experiences. And other children are denied those experiences or they constantly have to earn them or prove they're worthy of them. And so I really wanted the title to set the tone that we're not talking about a physical kind of access, like are they there? But we're talking about what happens to them when they're in the program? What happens to them when they're in the classroom? What kind of learning experiences are they having? And we see a lot of segregation just by seeing what kind of experiences children have and don't have.
Well, thank you for coming and the interest in our book. Muchas gracias. I see people from all over. We went through many titles throughout the process and thinking, what will be the best that can capture what we're trying to convey and the message of the book? And as Jen mentioned, we have opportunities to visit many, many classrooms. And one of the issues was what type of experiences children were having in all these spaces? And it was clear to us after analyzing the data, especially in this particular study, that some children get to do certain things and other children get to do other things. And as upsetting that was to us, we felt that that really captured the message that we were trying to convey. What type of experiences do children have? And how do these experiences go and be segregated? And depending on who that student is, what language that student speaks, who the parents of that students are? There's so many factors that actually take place in what type of experience the children actually get to have in the classroom. So we felt after going back and forth between many titles that this was really something that expressed the main core of the book. And so I think that's how we decided and that was the best, particularly for this book.
So within what you saw in the classroom, can you share, you know, some of the practices that you saw in those visits that you had in other countries in the US?
So when we would go, when we would go into classrooms that were predominantly white or European heritage children, middle class, upper middle class, upper class children, when we would go into these classrooms, we, what we saw was very different than when we went into classrooms with mostly children of color or what we call Title I schools in the US, where families are struggling with often generations of economic oppression and struggle. And we would go into classrooms, sometimes within like two miles of each other, and you would see children being treated and having very different kinds of experiences. For example, this, the idea for this study actually started in Arizona. I don't know if we have people from Arizona here on this call, but there is a city in Arizona called Mesa. And when I was a graduate student, we went to different kinds of schools, mostly schools that serve children of immigrants, of Mexican and Guatemalan immigrants. And when we were there, we would walk into classrooms. And if those schools or classrooms were predominantly children of immigrants, kids were being yelled at. They were walking in prison-like lines. They were having to sit on their hands. They were having to put bubbles in their mouth. They could not talk to their friends unless they raised their hand. It was a constant, constant controlling behavior. The teachers were almost all white European heritage teachers. And the experiences that the kids were not speaking in Spanish necessarily, almost never. And the kinds of things that they were doing with their bodies was very, very controlled. And they could not talk. They could not move without specific permission. When we would go into classrooms that were predominantly white, students were walking in kind of a line, not a line. There was a lot of chatting. There would be singing. There would be little jokes happening, lots of laughing. Students didn't have to sit on a square in the carpet with their name on it with an X on it. They didn't have to wait in line to go outside. They could just go outside. The differences in what children were experiencing, what kinds of things were normalized to them was so dramatically different that it put into, it started this whole research and this whole idea about why aren't, why aren't young children all not necessarily, we're not the same. So we don't necessarily have to do everything the same. But why aren't we being offered the same kinds or very similar kinds of learning experiences? What we noticed is for in schools that were predominantly communities of color, children to be able to do what we saw in white, mostly white schools or economically advantageous schools, in order for them to be able to do what we saw in white schools, they had to earn it with a fun Friday or they had to do some, had good behavior all week so they could have an hour of choosing what they did. So to get what someone else had, they had to earn it. So part of what this book is trying to do is to, is to show a classroom where they did get to have that kind of learning experience and how amazing it was for the students, but then how everybody struggled when they saw videos of that classroom. So really, the research and what we kept seeing was like, just based on what the kids look like and who their families were and what languages they spoke, we were seeing totally different practices in those schools. Now, if you want to add something to that, Kyomi?
I only want to say that when they do the same thing, it's how different is the label for that? If somebody is disrupted, the other one has leadership. Or it's good that they do these type of things. It helped them to have leadership, well, working collaborative spaces in the future. But for other children, especially for Latinx and African American children, if immediately disrupted and they don't know how to behave. And so the label that goes with that type of behavior was very detrimental as well. So that was, that was something that I wanted to point out.
I really, I'm so glad you said that because there were, we saw, you would see a kid yell out an idea and the teacher would, in some schools, would praise that idea and praise the initiative, right? That it took to say that idea. And another classroom, that kid is sent to the back of the room, to the principal's office. That, that child is silenced. It's, it's just a very different way of, and it's, as we all know, kids learn who they are, what society expects of them, what it means to be a learner, all in these early years. So if those are your experiences, they, as, as we'll learn later in the book, they, little kids do start getting opinions and thoughts about what it means to be a learner just based on their experiences at school and what's praised and what's considered misbehavior.
Oh, that, that's great. Thank you. I also want to remind all our participants that if you have any questions, if you want to put in the Q and A box, we will have some time at the end to be able to ask the authors your questions. So as you were talking about this, and can you walk us through the process of your actual research process? What is video cue ethnography? And how does this method help you understand, you know, what's going on in classrooms and with educators? Do you want to start, Kyomi?
Sure. So we conducted a video cue ethnography. One of the first things that happened is actually that Jen visited multiple, multiple classrooms and find Miss Bailey's class. Video cue ethnography work in a way that we have spent a great amount of time in the classroom doing ethnography. We're trying to learn about that particular classroom, understand the kind of the heart of the class. You can be in many first grade classrooms, but it's just to be able to learn about the teacher, about the students, and spend a good amount with them. We actually were there for a year, visiting the classroom three or four times a week. So we did that for a whole year. Halfway into the year, we actually filmed. And that's when the video cue ethnography come. We have spent three days, not three years, three days filming the class. And how it worked, because they're first graders, so of course they get excited with cameras. But throughout the research, we actually brought in the cameras, videotaped them a little bit. But out of the three days, the first day is the day that it's kind of like a practice day. We get to be with the children. They get to play with the camera, see themselves videotape and kind of touch everything and get familiar with it. And then we have two full days of video in the whole classroom. That's a lot of footage. We look at the footage and we create with that footage a 20-minute film that shows a typical day in that class. What is typical is that is no best practices. It's actually what happened in that particular classroom. If they fight, they get upset. If the teacher has something to say. It's like a real day. So it's not like I edited. So the teacher looks amazing and the kids look amazing, even though they were. But it's really like a picture of them in that particular day for 20 minutes of something that happened all the time. The beauty is, we spent so much time in the class for so long that it's almost like a family. You can anticipate who's going to say what, who's going to sit with whom. It's, it's just getting to know that space so well that it helped you to video and then to create a video, the 20 minutes, that actually show a typical moment in the classroom. The teacher gets to see it first and the children and the parents of that particular class. After that, we take that film and we show it to other people. For our study, we showed the film to 250 people who participated in the study. But throughout our work with Jen going to conference, I think thousands of people have seen the film, pieces of films in the film. So the idea is that when we show the film, we're getting responses from the parents, from the teachers, from administrators, from curriculum superintendents, from different people to tell us how they understand and what they think about what they're seeing. So it's almost like a prompt that tells us about their beliefs about what they're seeing and understanding. And that's what feeds our data and the opportunity to analyze it and bring up all the information that you actually get to read throughout the chapters in the book.
Unfortunately, this is not a, this is not a like short research study. Took 10 years to do. Many times, I'm like, why did we choose this research methodology? Like, we could have written like 17 million books at this point. But yeah, so that basic kind of, this comes from, if anyone is familiar with the preschool and three cultures study that was done in the late 1980s, this is modeled after that where you, instead of asking a bunch of research questions, you make a film in a classroom and then you show that film to lots of people. And, and they talk about practices in early childhood and they tell you what they think. And that's, instead of asking them a research question, you, you show them the video and that basically asks them the question. So we thought we would, I would show you a little clip of that film that we showed everyone. And the reason this is important, this is important to understanding the whole book as well as all of the themes that emerged in the book and the kind of the topics for the rest of the roundtable. We show, as we showed this 20-minute film, we showed the same film to all 250 people that we interviewed, all the parents, all the teachers, all the administrators, all of the young children, all of the community members. Everybody saw the same film, but they had very different reactions. And their reactions were not how we predicted they would be. And so what I wanted to show you right now is a clip. It's about a one minute of this 20-minute film. So you could kind of get a sense of what it's like. But I'm going to show you this scene that got the most attention in the focus group. So when we would show this film, this scene got the most like traction, like most people talked about this scene. So I'm going to show it to you. And but while you're watching and right after, I really want you to use the chat. So in the chat, if you can just share what you think educators might respond to either positively or negatively, like what in that scene would get teachers talking? Like, do you, is there something you really agree with? That you really liked? Is there practice that you really didn't like? Or you can take the position of a six or seven-year-old child who's watching this. How do you think children would react to this scene? So we'll watch it, but please use the chat because it's really fun to see what everyone thinks as you're watching. So before this, what's happened is they've come into the classroom. They started the day and they're writing the date and the weather in their notebooks. And one student's going to start to have, basically get confused about something and she's going to try to get some help. And that's, that's the scene you're about to watch. Okay, so I'm going to open the chat so I can see what you all say too. But just say, if you're a child or an educator, what would you notice? What would you have opinions about, positive or negative? Helping each other, engaged, peer-to-peer learning, engaged. I can tell you're all High Scope people having a very High Scope reaction to this scene, which is great. So a lot of you are answering as adults. What do you think the children said? Some of you are saying too many children in the class, lots of talking, lots of background noise, lots of conversation about Justin Bieber at this time. Like, that was every day. A lot of Justin Bieber footage. A lot of talking. This is great. This is actually quite similar to what a lot of the adults said. So this is kind of how video queued works. So see how you kind of, as a viewer, you almost get like, you can't help yourself. You're kind of pulled into saying what your opinion is about, about those practices you just saw. And you kind of compare them to how you would do it, even though you weren't asked to do that. We kind of naturally, when we see a film of early childhood practice, and that's a lot of where we live our lives, we, and it's a lot of what we think about during the day, we watch it and we kind of naturally compare it to what we think should happen or what our classroom does or what our schools do or what our training is meant to do. So that's how video queued works. And is to set up the video like a set of research questions that makes it a much more enjoyable experience for research participants and gives us a way to ask young children questions. It's really hard to do research with young children. They're very good at getting out of stuff and they're very good at not answering the question you asked. I just think they're very, very smart. And so the video actually makes it much easier for them to answer questions. So in that, when, for example, when educators watched the film, they, educators and parents had a similar kind of first reaction to the film, which was a very positive reaction. They liked the practices, but they did not agree about whether or not the practices were good for the children of color at their schools. So they liked seeing the kids in the film doing it. And at that school that you saw is a Title I school. It's a high-needs, high-poverty school. Majority are children of color, children of Latinx immigrants and African American communities. So what, and then we only took it to schools with very similar demographics. So they're saying they're watching the kids in the video and they like what they see, but they don't think it'll work for the kids at their school. And one of the chapters is just about how the teachers responded. But the parents agreed that they liked it. They liked what they saw, the kids moving around, using their initiative, helping each other, noticing a problem. But they didn't agree as to whether or not kids, their own kids should be doing it. Now, when we went to the little kids, the five, six, and seven-year-olds, we interviewed 100 of them. Not all at one time, that would be crazy. But in groups of three or four, they had a very different reaction from their adults. In fact, every single child who watched it had a very negative reaction to that scene. They thought it was terrible. They thought the kids weren't learning anything. And a lot of this book is trying to figure out why they think that. We were shocked by that. It got a little bit depressing at times, but the book is really trying to understand why, when everybody watched it, why did they have such different views? And we, we go into a lot of detail about what they said about the film. But we also, just so you know, the next, the, the second chapter is all about that classroom. It's all the stuff the kids got to do. Everything about, led by a teacher named Ms. Bailey, who will be here next month. She'll be one of the panelists. And, but the book spends a lot of time trying to figure out why in the world the kids, why the adults didn't totally agree with each other about whether or not kids could handle these practices and why the kids all thought those practices were terrible. So I just wanted to give everyone a chance to have a sense of like how video queued ethnography works and what all the research participants that you would be reading about, what experience they had. And you can imagine if that was just 10 minutes, how much we learned from spending 90 minutes with all 250 participants showing them this film, so.
Jen, I have to say, like, as we're, as you were following the chat, there's a lot of conversation going on with all the participants, which is really great. This is really what you were trying to highlight with a video cue ethnography. It starts conversation. And, but you know, in several places, people have talked about agency and, and they mentioned the word agency. And so can you, can you share a bit about how? And so can you, can you share a bit about how is agency going to play a role in this book?
So when the research first started and we've noticed that kids were having very different learning experiences, depending on where you go and depending on who their families are um, and the communities that they come from, um, trying to figure out what that difference was, was the challenge. And what became obvious over a few years was the difference was agency. So in classrooms where children were considered smart and capable and they, they weren't subjected to any kind of racist or um, discriminatory views by the school, by the system, by the teachers, the kids could use their agency, they could influence what they learned about, how they learned something, they could make decisions about their learning. Not all the time for everything, that would be crazy. But they could, every day they had opportunities to influence and make decisions about their learning. And because they could do that, they could expand all of these amazing capabilities, leadership capabilities, critical thinking capabilities, problem solving, how to work together, how to show care, how to build community, all of these capabilities came through their learning because they got to use their agency as individual kids, collectively as groups of kids, to decide how they were going to learn something and what they were going to learn about. Again, everything is within a structure, it's not like a free for all. But they got to have some influence on that and that changed them as learners. As opposed to other classrooms where everything is about control, to do anything, you had to get permission from someone other than yourself to move, you couldn't talk, you can't decide what you're learning about. If you're interested in butterflies, who cares? Um, or there's no time for that, or you don't get to make any of those decisions. Where you work, sitting or laying down, reading a book, what book you read, all of those things are, are not within the decision-making or influence of the child. So agency, that ability to influence and make decisions about how you're and what you're learning. Um, that's really what ends up being the segregated experience. Um, do you get to use your agency at school or not? Do you have, do you have to earn that? Do you have to prove you're worthy? Do you have to prove you're being good? Or do you get it just because that's what good learning looks like? And that becomes like a major theme in the, in the book.
Uh, you know, Kiomi, I'm, I'm really curious to learn about um, how agency in, in a bicultural bilingual classroom and why, why it's been so important to, to you as also an educator in a bilingual classroom?
So when I was a teacher, I was um, amazed by my students. Uh, they were bilingual, they were extremely smart, they were super capable, they loved to help. Um, they were amazing young kids. But one of the things that I noticed is many times they didn't have any opportunities to enact their agency, to be able to make choices, to be able to, to do many things that I knew they were capable. So then when they did have opportunities to show them, I, at that time, I did not know that was agency. It was just my early childhood thinking this is the best way for a child to learn. Um, but then, obviously now we can um, conceptualize it in that way. But then I learned that when the kids have those opportunities, they show a lot of things that they could do. And people were always amazed. So to me, when, when Jen brought up and said, hey, you want to work with me in this project? I said, this will be an amazing way, not only to know how capable um, Latinx immigrant children and children of immigrants are, but also how much their families and their experiences can bring into the conversation and into our research. So that piece to me like family, community, um, the parents' experiences, wishes, desires and knowledge can really um, enlighten what we know in early childhood education. While we think about people in theories and all these fantasies, but we don't really think about the knowledge of the families. So I felt like this was a great opportunity to learn from um, immigrant families, um, and bilingual families and understand also how they support the agency of their children or how they felt or what they believe was important for their children to learn. And so that, that section was, was also important for the research, to have the voices of a community that hardly ever is asked. And to be honest, we learned so much, the families were so generous with their time, when their knowledge, understanding. So um, I'm always amazed by how the method allowed a community to actually have a voice. Many of the people that we interviewed were immigrants, so they never, many of them, unfortunately, when they moved to the US, when they were fifteen, sixteen, uh, in their teens, they never went back to school in the US, but so they never got to see a classroom. And having this film and seeing kind of like a, a little window into the educational experiences of their children was really helpful and enriching in how much they actually knew. But many things they also didn't know and spaces that were kind of like closed and guarded for them that they didn't have access or they didn't have opportunities to participate. So to me is that, that uh, as an immigrant myself and an immigrant mother, I feel like that was something important to give voice to uh, through the research uh, with Jen into a community that we usually don't know much. And, and it's because we don't want to know or we don't ask them.
So I know, I know in that first chapter, um, you, you talk about this is not a book about best practices and that, you know, that this is not what teachers are going to get. So will teachers, what, what are they going to learn from this? Or what are we, the educators, what are we going to learn from this?
Um, well, you, you are going to get a lot of practices. Um, in at least three of the chapters, there is a lot of stories, um, almost to a Vivian Paley extent of just the amazing things that children got to do and what they did with their agency. Um, some of the capabilities that they demonstrated, skills that they showed just because they could, they could use that agency and their teachers supported them. Um, you're going to learn a lot about Ms. Bailey as a teacher and what she tried to do and how complicated it got sometimes. Um, as, as those of you that are teachers or have been teachers, we all know that we don't get to be exactly the teacher we want to be. There's not really a scenario in which we get to, we don't have total freedom to do anything that we want to do, we're always working within some boundaries. And part of the book talks about that struggle that she has as she's trying to offer the children of color in her classroom, a very atypical amount of agency. Um, she's also trying to respect family and cultural values. She's trying to make sure that children are respectful, because that's a really important part of, of the family's ideas about what it means to be educated. She's trying hard to work within the politics of her school. Sometimes um, looks from other teachers who don't like the, the kids walking around and making noise. Um, so there, it's, it's not just here's all the things teachers should do, but it's more like this is what agency looks like. And it is really complicated to do this because you're going against sometimes schools and larger society ideas about which kids can handle certain kinds of practices. You're going against pretty strong discriminatory ideas, against language, against racism. Um, and so it gets complicated, so we try to be really honest. The teacher, Ms. Bailey, she read all drafts of this book, every chapter. And sometimes she said, you're glossing over this part. This part was complicated, you need to write about it better. So we try to be really honest, instead of just listing out a bunch of things you should do. Although, I should say that when you're done with a book, you know, obviously our hope is that agency becomes a pedagogical tool and it becomes a, a part of your approach to teaching. Um, or to setting up schooling environments.
Can I add something? In, in many conversations that we have with Jen, we felt like agency was almost like a sunglasses or like lenses or something you put in. Like how you look at your classroom, how you think about the children, the teacher you want to be, what type of children you want to graduate at the end of the year or what is the vision you have for young children in general? So when we said like a best practices, it was almost like a molded way to do. And we have worked in different places within the US. Um, we've been living in different parts of the world. So we can see that it's not like a one size fits for all, but it's more like a your, as a teacher and educator, how you're enacting your own practice in your own agency and the space you teach by the lenses you're looking at your environment, your children, the families and your own practice. So, so it's not something that we can give you A, B, C, check, you got agency. It's more like, it's a, it's a way to see in your practice. And, and hopefully this book gives you an understanding from so many different stakeholders that help you guide, support, enhance your practice in a way that you see that this agency thing is something that really can transform the space where you teach.
Mm-hmm. So if you went to, for example, especially thinking about the global, this global group on the call right now, um, my youngest, my older two children went to preschool in India and in southern India. And the way that agency manifests itself in school, you follow directions very quickly. But your life outside of school is very agentic. Like you, you are in charge of a lot. You're in charge of bedtime, you're in charge when you eat, if you eat. There's a lot of things that kids are in charge of that kind of balances it out. If I'm with Maori communities in New Zealand or Aboriginal communities in Australia, what agency looks like is very community oriented. It has a lot to do with children coming and going on their own. Um, children and adults being in the same place all the time. Uh, it just looks different, it's a very culturally, that's another reason why we didn't want a best practices book. Because like Kiomi was saying, it's, it's going to look different. The point is, do children get to influence and make decisions about their learning on a regular basis in some ways? Um, and, and what that ends up looking like um, is beautifully different, depending on where you are.
That's great, and we have a lot of questions uh, in the Q and A box, but I have one last question. It's, it's a little bit of a heavier question. So the theories that you use in this um, developmental econ, econ, economics um, and the racial contract, um, it, they seem difficult and heavy. And so how, how do you make sense of it in early childhood education? And can you discuss that more and about it in, in the book?
So there's definitely other, um, other months too, where this, whether or not I'm here, this, the topic of, of um, how we think about development and how we think about learning and the role of racism and how we think about learning and development will, I'm sure, come up more and more. Um, but just as like a, a brief intro, um, Amartesh Sen, who's a Nobel laureate, he studies how nations develop. Um, that his idea about what development is for countries, we applied that to young children. So for example, he would say that the way that children, I mean, the way that nations develop has a lot to do with lots of factors and that nation, if, if communities and people in those nations don't have agency and they don't have wellbeing, then you can't call them developed. Like if they can't make any decisions and they can't live lives that are meaningful to them, then how can we call that developed, no matter how much money the country makes? And in the same way, I'm getting, I was getting at the time increasingly concerned that the only reason we were deciding children were developed is if they got a certain score on a test. And it was becoming like, this child is developed based on whether or not they scored a certain, in a certain way, in a certain level on this test. And so we started using his ideas about development for children, that children need agency in order to develop, or else you're just, you're just, you're, you're basing their development on something outside of them, of who they are. Um, and their identities and, and the things that they're interested in. And in the same way, it started becoming really obvious that some kids get to have that experience of making those decisions and being thought of holistically in their development. And some kids are just being based on the number on, um, on what interventions they need, what labels they're being given. Um, and that racism or the way that race operates, particularly the US, but I would argue in lots of places, whether or not it's religious oppression or linguistic or um, indigenous communities, the way in which we decide who is worthy of having agency over their lives has a lot to do with racism and oppression and, and how we think about people. And the racial contract talks about that and uses it as a lens to see not only what agency is, but who gets to have it.
Well, thank you. Um, you know, it's, we're, I, we promised the, the audience that we're going to give them ten minutes of questions. So I, I'm going to start chatting down and starting to ask some questions that are, are up in the chat. So we have uh, Patricia who's asking if the level of teacher training or curriculum makes a difference in how teachers taught and how children learn.
Mm-hmm, so it, um, the, the, it did have an impact, but it was not nearly as strong a variable as the attitude towards the families and children. The attitude, how you thought about children, how you thought about children's families and the communities that they come from was by far the most, the strongest variable to how you teach. Um, we saw, we saw classrooms that would use the very same curriculum, but the experiences the children were having were very different. And the reason they were different, or the variable that was different between the two teachers was their views on the kids' families. So if a teacher has negative assumptions or deficit thinking or um, gosh, whose parents aren't educated enough to help their kids, or they don't care about education. If that's your view of the child, either as a principal or administrator or teacher, then you are consciously or unconsciously going to treat the child like they cannot handle agency. Like they can't handle having any influence or making that many decisions over their learning. And that was a much bigger variable.
And can I add something? There's some schools that actually pick up, um, they got to choose their own curriculum. So within the teachers that we interviewed, some of them actually got more flexibility and freedom compared to other districts that have more regulated curriculum and content. Uh, and so that, that's interesting, when you get to that, that chapter, it's, it's very interesting too, because sometimes even with more flexibility, that'd be a mean different things about a child or what are capable to do.
So we, we also have a question from Nancy who's asking, um, did you ever find a difference between the way um, teachers, black teachers were treating the children and teachers who are white European manage children of color? Did you, was there anything that you noticed?
We, I mean, I'll let Kiomi talk about um, any differences between bilingual and monolingual teachers. Um, the Ms. Bailey is a black immigrant teacher. Um, and again, you'll hear from her next month, the next session. Um, and there were, it took us a while to figure out what was happening, but there were comments about her um, as a teacher by white and white passing teachers. Um, part of why it may have been difficult for teachers to appreciate or praise what she did um, could be their own views of her as a, as a, as an individual in her own background. Um, we found, we found differences in how how much community was a part of the conversation, how much children's families were a part of decision making. Um, pedagogically, there were teachers that had still very negative views of the kids and there were teachers who didn't across racial lines. And that became, um, there were less negative comments between black teachers who watched Ms. Bailey than not. But there were plenty of negative comments across racial groups um when they were watching um the children in the classroom or when they're talking about the kids in their own classrooms. So I think that's hard, is a hard thing. It's a hard thing as a white educator and as a white researcher. That is a very difficult thing for me to talk about. Um, but also this was collected over this, the, our data collection stopped about three years ago and a lot of things have changed in three years. Some things haven't changed at all, but some things have changed. So, um, so we did find some differences in the response to Ms. Bailey. But the, the, the deficit assumptions could still be present. Often when the child was coming from a racial or linguistic group that was different from the teacher watching. So you could have a black Spanish speaking stu- uh teacher watching the film and might have a different reaction from a black monolingual English speaking teacher. Um, so there were, it did get really complicated, but we did notice some differences.
And then we have the bilingual, we have bilingual, um, the teachers we interviewed were in ESL um bilingual and dual language programs. And, and with that, sometimes the bilingual teachers were quite harsh with families um and the children. So that was, that was something that was interesting because some of the places we chose, um, there were the majority of the students were bilingual, very bilingual communities. Uh, but still we have that, um, we have a lot of deficit thinking and discourses about the children and the family from people who were children of immigrants themselves and they were part of those communities. So I think, um, so yeah, it was, and, and it's, um, and when we're trying to make sense, it's, it's just trying to understand uh the spaces, the professionalism of teachers and understanding what it means to be a bilingual teacher and, and how good your Spanish needs to be, to be working with bilingual communities. And sometimes when that is not that fluent, what happened is they chose English, for example, to communicate with bilingual families. And the interpretation of their parents about that and what the teachers are saying about it, it was interesting. It's complex and, but that has had to, to do a lot with the expectations for bilingual teachers and also um the type of role they have within their communities.
We had a question if, if the setting of the school, was it a public school sys- uh, school, private school?
All, all of the sites were public schools and all of them matched within a, a 10% of demographics. So the communities they served were very similar. Um, no matter, no matter where we went. Um, the one exception, well, there's not really an exception, they were all within that 10% and we wanted to do that, but what got kind of weird is that in most of the places when they'd watch the films, they would talk about the kids in the film and they would talk about the kids at their school as if they were very, very different. Um, even though we, we told them before. I should say, I feel like I feel kind of weird about my answer in the question before. Only because I think in the book, we spend a lot of time talking about how this isn't ultimately about teachers. Like it's not, teachers need to fix themselves and that's what will fix this entire giant problem of some kids getting to use their agency and other kids not. It's, teachers are amazing, but you can't fix an entire system. And there are ways that we put teachers into really difficult circumstances. And we ask things of them that we're all kind of reflecting this giant societal problem in different ways. And so it's very clear um about respecting teachers and, and making sure that this is not about blaming anyone, this is about trying to figure out how the system is operating so that we can recognize it and decide in our classrooms what we're going to do and recognize the stuff that we may struggle with wherever we're teaching, with whatever communities that we're teaching.
Yeah, thank you.
Put that out there.
Oh, definitely.
And, yeah. And understanding their collective understanding with each, each group. So when we talk about superintendents, when we talk about curriculum people, when we talk about teachers, it's like a, a really understanding what they're trying to convey and also the rationale for that and trying to, to make a case why these things are happening, which is more complicated what Jennifer was saying.
Thank you, Ki. I, I mean, thank you because it, it leaves us with a, an optimistic um view, right? Because it's, it is, and teachers do such incredible work. Administrators, everyone um does so much in our schools and even now, right now, that we have the added pressure of going into schools with, with, so we, you know, it's, it's a reflection of what, what is going on and we appreciate. There's one last question, one more, because I know I'm, I'm to the last minute. But did you all notice any environmental differences or like outdoor environments from um the schools, you know, more affluent school versus the schools that you visited?
Um, yeah. Um, not so much in terms of like the playground or like that kind of stuff. More like access to materials. So in more affluent or wider kind of context, the access to materials was much easier. Like for example, there wouldn't be lids on stuff or things would be labeled and at child height. And there wouldn't be a barrier between you and stuff, even stuff that's slightly messy. And I don't mean like the giant jars of glue and paint. I don't mean, that wasn't like everywhere. But there was access to a lot of materials and a lot of ways to learn that in um in less affluent classrooms or classrooms earning community colors, there was a lot of control and compliance around all the materials. How many people could use them at one time? Who was um in charge? How many people in this area? Who was um? Who, how many things you could have at one time? What area of the room could you use them in? And as you get richer and wider, the regulation on that stuff goes down a lot. Um, but, and again, this is where it all gets depressing. I do want to say that every time we got sad, we went back to the videos of Ms. Bailey's class. We went back to how she did her class. She was incredible. And she, she, the, what the kids learned under her, we know it's possible. We know it's possible in almost any educational context. Um, and we, we hope that that, this, the chapter two is really inspiring about what she does um and what the children are able to demonstrate and show just by how she teaches in her classroom. So I hope even in all this crazy that um what, what teachers do makes, and just how what, how you treat children and how, what you offer them can change the direction of their lives.
Wow. I mean, Jen and Kiomi, thank you so much for this presentation. We are so close to, to the final hour. Um, I want to thank you. I know we have a, a second session that we will have. Every chapter of the book will have eight round tables to celebrate segregation by experience. Um, we thank you for your participation to everyone. Uh, I know Katie, if we can show and that we can give the link uh of the book so that you can actually purchase it on the Highscope website. You, we are selling um the book. And we will also be emailing certificates of attendance will be emailed to you in 24 hours after the event. All of these round tables will be recorded, so you will be able to see them afterwards. And um we also encourage you to, you can visit our highscope.org shop and you can find our, the book there or you can find it in your local library. We will have our next round table on September the 15th. At the same time, we invite you to join us there for chapter two, where Ms. Bailey will be part of that presentation. We also want to encourage you to um join the National Black Child Development Institute is holding their annual conference. And we are sharing the link for you to also register at that. That's an event that will occur in October. And um always really participating. Highscope is proud to really um be a voice of important topics in early childhood education. We look forward to seeing you in September. And once again, thank you very much to the authors for joining us today.
Thank you.